All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this November 2nd, 2023 Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We are here in council chambers in Sammamish City Hall. Let's start out at the beginning here with roll call. Sudrahani Sunkara.
Here.
Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Mark Bachman, I am here. Mike Bresko.
Here.
Carrie Bosworth.
Here.
And Sayed Savian.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Next, Julian, can you read the meeting accessibility statement?
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801-228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comment through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide a public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To get public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To get public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: us+1-253-215-8782, webinar ID 82822648794.
Thank you. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Doc 2024 docket. I can't believe it's November 23 already. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Nope, so we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from our October 12 meeting. Anyone have any corrections for those meeting minutes? Nope, no corrections, so we'll call the meeting minutes from the October 12 meeting approved by common consent. Next, public comment, non-agenda, so any comments unrelated to the docket requests that we're going to have a public hearing about later. Now's the time for a public comment on non-agenda. All right, Mr. Stickney. Careful with that old word. I can take that personally sometimes.
Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Tonight, I'm doing a summary of some comments I've made over time, but it's pretty much an important comment about virtually everything, all things and everything in Sammamish. The comp plan was done October 21st. That was an important meeting. Some recap comments. As all of you know, I've been working for a long time on what has been renamed to enrich, sustain, and stay, and am putting forth ideas that I believe can add value across the board to every aspect that is Sammamish, and it's the opposite of devalue, harm, and leave. And I think that we are faced with a choice of how we use our land that will have effect on virtually everything. On October 17th, I made a comment at the city council meeting and basically said that our housing supplies are built on false premises, and that's to be used twice. The actual housing supplies that we have in the city don't adequately meet the needs of people that live here over cycle of life or future generations. We're out of balance. Also, what actually happened on our growth target number and housing needs analysis a year ago had some false premises at the time that I believe need to be re-corrected and reassessed. At the comp plan meeting, of which many of you were at on the 21st, I discussed a concept that I believe can solve the problem, which is Goldilocks housing. So when you've got Goldilocks and the Three Bears, she picked the porridge that was just right. When you're talking about a star in a solar system, a zone around a star where a planet can be placed that has liquid water is the Goldilocks zone, and that's a range. And here's what's critical. Every star has a different Goldilocks zone because not all stars are the same. Now I'll move that into Sammamish. What is the Goldilocks zone for the right amount of different and diverse housing for our community to meet generational needs, both lifetime and legacy? Every community is not the same. They're just all unique. So how do we find ours out? We look at economic needs, demographic needs, and workforce needs for cycle of life and future generations compared to our housing stock and find out what our needs are. What is the moral of the story? Don't get angry, don't get upset with numbers. Figure out what the Goldilocks range is and rejoice in finding a solution in that range. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else for non-agenda? Okay. Let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which is a public hearing to talk about the docket request and consider what we want to recommend to the city council. And just a reminder, we'll have a presentation, ask questions, have our public hearing, have a discussion, and then hopefully have a motion, decide what we're going to do. So let's start out with the presentation. Jackie, I think this is you.
Yep, that is me. If someone could just confirm that you can see my screen. I can't see anyone.
I can see it, Jackie. Yes, we can see it.
Yes, we can see it.
Sorry.
You sit through so many Zoom and Teams meetings, eventually you forget to actually answer anybody's questions.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jackie Belial, and I'm a management analyst for community development. So tonight, we'll be giving a presentation on the 2024 docket requests and staff's recommendations. After the presentation, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council. The docket is an annual process for considering text amendments to the city's comprehensive plan or development regulations or site-specific land use map amendments. Anyone can submit a docket request as long as they are turned in by the annual deadline of the first Monday of August each year at 5:00 p.m. This year, we had two docket requests submitted, and both are text amendments. Both were presented to the Planning Commission at the October 3 joint meeting with the city The first step in the docket process is deciding which proposals should be put on the docket for consideration in the coming years. So any items that are set on the docket go through the legislative process, legislative review process, where they are fully considered and reviewed. If the city council chooses to docket an item and it is added to the work plan, staff will complete a more thorough review and then return to the Planning Commission and city council for further discussion and consideration. So an easy way to think about it is tonight, we are making a list of things to work on in the future and not reviewing each item in detail right now. After tonight's public hearing, the city council will have a public hearing on December 5 and vote on a resolution to set the docket. Staff has analyzed both of the docket requests and based on the criteria spelled out in Title 24A. So those criteria are: how do the docket requests align with staff work plan items? Is there budget to complete the work? Is there staff availability to complete a full review of the requests? And are the proposals consistent with current policies and priorities? We'll take a look at the docket requests that we received this year and the staff's recommendations, which were also included in tonight's agenda packet. So the first request was submitted by the Eastman Development LLC, and is a proposed text amendment. The request asks to amend Land Use Goals 3 and 3.2 of the Sammamish Comprehensive Plan to include the creation of a new Eastlake Neighborhood Subarea. The requested text changes to each goal are included in bold on here. So on the first one, it is to add and to create a new Eastlake Neighborhood Subarea located within the Sammamish Thumb. And on Land Use Goal 3.2, it is to add the text and Eastlake Subarea. Those were also included in tonight's agenda packet. Just for reference, we've included a map of the area that this is referring to. Just to be clear, this is a very general map. The red square is just an approximation. We just wanted to give people kind of a general idea of where the request is referring to. For staff's recommendation, we have answered yes to the work plan alignment criteria because the city's land use goals are being evaluated as part of the periodic update. However, the level of specificity that is requested by the applicant is outside the scope of the current comprehensive plan update. For budget availability, this proposal is not eligible for fee waivers related to public benefit, so expenses would be covered by the applicant, so it would not affect the city's budget. Staff does not have the availability or capacity to add a project of this size and scope in 2024. For policy and program consistency, the development of subareas follows a standard process, which is detailed in this staff recommendation. So overall, staff has recommended an alternative option in place of the requested text amendments, that this area be added as a neighborhood center on the comprehensive plan's future land use map, and a new land use goal be added related to the creation of neighborhood centers throughout the city. This approach would broaden the request to include neighborhood centers in general beyond a specific area, and this way, neighborhood centers would follow the traditional planning process where plans are developed to be responsive to the community's need. The second request was submitted by the Lake Washington School District and is also a proposed text amendment. The request proposes amending the Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, chapter of the Sammamish Development Code to incorporate receiving site incentives from a sending site not currently identified in subsection 2 of the Receiving Site Incentives Table. This would essentially allow for the transferring of density within the town center. For staff's recommendation, the work plan alignment is a yes because an evaluation of the TDR program is currently on the 2024 work plan. The budget availability is also a yes. Based on current staffing levels and the anticipated 2024 work plan, there is a very limited capacity to add additional components to the planned TDR review. For policy and program consistency, the city supports the utilization of TDRs from publicly-owned properties within Town Center to be transferred to properties that are more suitable for development in Town Center. So overall, the staff recommend that this proposal move forward contingent on the extent of the scope of the TDR review. So to summarize, staff do not recommend docketing the first request, but would like the commission to consider an alternative recommendation. And staff do recommend docketing Request 2 as it meets most of the decision criteria. So after tonight, the next step will be the city council public hearing on December 5, and I will just go ahead and pause here to give everyone a chance to ask any questions, anything you'd like us to go back over before the public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Maybe I'd just like to remind everybody and reinforce a couple of things that Jackie said. Excuse me. One is that just remember that this is not necessarily about approving or not approving these things. This is about considering whether we should suggest to the city council if they should direct staff to continue considering these things. So it's kind of a, there's like a circuitous path to where we're getting to here. The other thing just to remember, and I allowed myself to forget this for a minute, but all of the information here is from the requesting folks. So, you know, we can ask staff very detailed questions about some of this stuff, and they didn't generate this, so they won't necessarily be the ones that know. However, in both cases, we've gotten quite a bit of other public comment information, so I think that's helpful in this particular case. So just kind of keep those two framing conditions in mind as we go through this. So let's go ahead and ask questions. What questions does anybody have? Sayed, go ahead.
Sorry. Maybe some questions can educate us. Can you elaborate on it? What is text amendment?
I'm so sorry. I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing.
What is definition? What is text amendment? Can you elaborate on that and educate us?
Yes, hold on. So text amendments is essentially almost exactly what it sounds like, but it is changing the actual wording or text of the comprehensive plan or the development regulations. So as you saw in the first request, the actual wording that the applicant has requested be changed was indicated in bold. So it's almost exactly what it sounds. It's changing the actual wording.
Is that different than land use amendment or zoning amendment?
Yes.
And also, reference was made to Sammamish Thumb. Is that a neighborhood? Is that an area of the city?
We were trying to show on the map, and I'll pull that back up. It's a very approximate area that the applicant is referring to. It's been referred to as the Eastlake Subarea, or Eastlake Neighborhood, or the Sammamish Thumb. David, if you know more about that, please answer.
Yeah, so in the packet, as part of the proposal that was submitted, there is an image, a graphic exhibit, I guess, that shows the parcels that are proposed, or under this proposal that would be affected by this proposal. They're highlighted in green, I believe, on an aerial photograph that shows that westerly slope of the site.
Also, there was a reference to the subarea designation. I think that that is what the applicant is asking, and the staff recommending that to be a neighborhood center. Would that any substantial difference? Would have some substantial difference as far as the land use between the two definitions?
Could you state the question again?
There was reference made, I guess, that that is the applicant's recommendation to create subarea designation. So the question is that what is the difference between subarea designation and I heard that the staff recommending to call it neighborhood center? Is that right? So what would be the difference? Is the area difference? Is it different land use? Is it density? What is it?
It's the level of intensity and density. So a subarea designation is usually a much larger scale and much higher intensity or density. We don't see that this has carrying capacity for what we would equate to a subarea. Instead, we think what would be called a neighborhood center, which would result in possibly some residential, commercial, and as the applicant is proposing, possibly some ecotourism in that area that would balance out. But given the environmental constraints in this area generally, we don't think it's suitable or appropriate for a subarea.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ajay, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to check if my mic was on. So I have a couple of questions on this one. The first question that I had was that the request is to concentrate housing to one quarter of the overall property. That's about the two-mile, was it the two-mile? It's located two miles from Marymore. That is there, and three-quarters should be left for growth, natural growth, and other things. It seems to talk like there is some stormwater discharges that needs to be regulated, that needs to be put in, and that needs to be managed from here to remedy shotfalls and serve new development, and so on and so forth. So I was reading through it, and I was like, yeah, this is, this sounds like this is something that we can do. Then I went down towards the recommendations that the city had, which was that we do not have the staff availability, we do not have the policy and program consistency, and the staff recommendation is no. Should I read into it to say that, yeah, while this is a possible project, the amount of oversight, the amount of analysis that we would have to do is so much, at least as I see it, is so much more, and we're not going to have the kind of support that we would need to have for a project of this size? Should I read it like that?
So I would say yes for now. However, what I think that the staff, the staff recommended alternative is that this be included in the comprehensive plan as a future neighborhood subarea, excuse me, a future neighborhood center. Is that what it was called? I can't remember the terminology that we used exactly. And then what that would do is it would enable us to take up a study of the feasibility first, and then following a feasibility study, we then would, again, bring it back to the commission for further direction, the council for further direction, and possibly then add it to our work plan in 2025 or 2026 after the comprehensive plan update is complete. What we're saying is that we do not have capacity to take this on in conjunction with the 2024 comprehensive plan. Our agenda for that and the work plan for that is completely full, and that this would be something that we could add as a placeholder, as, you know, you could docket it and say, hey, we'd like you to pick this up, or you could add it in the comprehensive plan and identify it as a potential future neighborhood center. And maybe if you wanted to add some additional language around studying it and possibly, you know, working with the community to identify what it might include, that's something you could do. Or if you want, if you felt that this was something that had a value and the properties identified in green might make for a good future subarea and a good future ecotourism area, that you could make the changes recommended or, excuse me, requested by the applicant in this case. But all that would do, again, is result in us adding it to the work plan to study it in 2025 or later. To be clear, we're not going to study this as part of the comprehensive plan update through 2024.
Got it. Which means that if we said, if we were to consider this right now, we would do it, sorry for the French, but we would do it coming in blind, right? We would not have that feasibility study that we would need to be able to say, yes, this is good, yes, this doesn't have a lot of impact, yes, this is not going to create a runoff, yes, this is not going to make it, make things flooded, it's not going to do a bunch of things that we don't want it to do. So what you're saying right now is that we don't, we would not have that kind of insight without that feasibility study to be able to tell that right now. And to do that itself, we would have to consider this for 2025 or beyond. Am I right about that?
That's right. So it all depends on what language is put in the docket, and then ultimately, if that's bundled or nested into the comp plan update. You know, one option is, is if you were to docket some version of this, that we could pick it up and add it in with the comp plan in 2024 and simply just put a placeholder there that says that we should study this and nothing more. But what we're not ready to do is, and we have not done feasibility, on whether we should actually go ahead and make the change and add this as a subarea or even a neighborhood center. I think adding it to the future land use map as a potential neighborhood center, subject to further evaluation and study, is really the first step. And that's, I think, what we're trying to recommend here, is that that would be where we would land, is to include it as a potential future neighborhood center that would require additional study. And it's not a guarantee that it would, that it would become a neighborhood center, but what it does do is queues it up or loads it for work to start sometime in '25 or beyond, depending on the city council, you know, assigned work plan for the department.
Got it, got it. So because, the reason I was asking that was because from the, from the description of the proposed amendments that I was reading, it looked like this one was a little ahead of where the, where the city staff was looking at, right? That they were, they were actually trying to talk about canopy walks, they're trying to talk about ecotourism, they're trying to talk about the coconie restoration, and so on and so forth. There is a lot, I mean, it's all very, it's all aspirational as it stands, but I could not find anything to tell that there is enough information here for us to be able to say that this is good to go or not. And I think what you're saying is also the same thing, that you don't have the capacity to tell us if it is good to go or not.
Can I just?
We haven't studied it. Sorry, go ahead.
I think, so going back to what Jackie and Chair Bachman said, this process is really that very introductory step, right? So regardless of if it's docketed as proposed by the applicant, or if you choose the city's recommendation, either way, we would come back if the city council decides to add it to the docket and do a much more comprehensive review with a more thorough recommendation as to how it should proceed. I think for me, the distinction is, do you just want to move forward with docketing this specific subarea, or would you like to take a broader approach of adding it as a potential neighborhood center and integrating that into the comprehensive plan update? Does that help at all?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, because it still talks about, the language here talks about it being a lot more ecological, a lot weighted around. So that's why I'm like, if we say yes on this thing, are we truly saying yes to just that narrow interpretation, or are we saying yes across the board? And I could not tell the difference between the two of them.
From my interpretation, it's more like you're saying, yes, this is interesting to us, and we want to learn more and discuss this more in the upcoming years.
And so I can still say that with 2025 in mind.
Correct.
Without having to think about this in 2024.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
So going back to, and sort of building off Ajay's comments here, you know, we're in the midst of the comp plan update, and neighborhood centers is one of the new goals in the, in the update. So I think being consistent with where we were going citywide for looking at neighborhood centers, I'd be inclined to support the staff recommendation.
Carrie? We're talking you into it.
I did have all of those questions. I, you know, one of the things I'll just say, I was struggling this week reading this and revisiting it multiple times, and I appreciate the extra information from the public and Mr. Eastman today, was, is it a neighborhood center or is it a subarea? And it seems somewhere in between. And so I wasn't sure if, you know, just looking at the idea at face value, regardless of anything else, if neighborhood center did it justice. But with the discussion we had about the subarea, it doesn't seem like it's quite that either. So that question was answered. And then I also was curious about the staff availability and what that actually meant in terms of 2024. I appreciate that there's a way to, you know, think about it or review it, but later, that, so that's helpful to know as well. So I'm just repeating what we've been saying, but I was thinking about all those things. So thank you.
Actually, on the staff workload, you know, staff availability, if you could just briefly describe the difference between what was proposed by the applicant in terms of staff workload and then making the change to the future land use map?
I can take a stab at that question if...
I can take a stab at that question, if it's okay with the team. I think looking at identifying a neighborhood center and sub area that's under the scope of work for the comprehensive plan, actually doing the sub area planning and the neighborhood center planning, that is not on our work plan as Director Pyle mentioned. That would be something that would be deferred to a later work plan, like 25, 26. And that, you know, again, requires staff resources and funding. Sub area planning and neighborhood planning is not cheap, it is expensive, and it is a long process. So it would definitely be a separate work plan item that would need to be added to in the future after the comp plan is adopted.
Just a clarification, I think I understood that, but in terms of the text change, and that this is just, it looks like it's relatively easy to make the text change, much more complicated to do all the analysis and so forth. And so the recommendation in terms of changing the future land use map is still a change, it's a change to the map instead of to the text. And both strike me as similar levels of work, it's just the next step if you're to docket actually doing the analysis. Is that, is that, could you clear that up just a little bit, please?
So if I understand, the question is, when would the analysis occur? Is that correct?
Well, the text change itself doesn't require all of the analysis to the sub area.
No, it wouldn't, no.
Yeah.
That would come later.
Okay. And the benefit of doing the creation of neighborhood centers is that we could look more holistically across really all the future land use and, you know, determine best uses and so forth.
Exactly.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
T D, you haven't had a chance to speak yet, so.
I agree with all of them.
Short and sweet, I like that. Say it.
Hypothetical question, if Mr. Eastman comes tomorrow and submitted proposal, what happens? Would you look at it in the context of existing comp plan? Would you look at it in the context of the future comp plan? Yes to which?
The future comp plan has not been adopted yet, so we would look at it within the context of the current.
What is existing use for that 100 acres right now? Land use?
I believe, yeah, residential.
All residential? And these 100 acres all within the city? Because I thought that there's a part in the county, no?
It's all within the city.
And there was some discussion about environmental, I'm assuming that there are two levels of environmental studies that we were talking about. One is as, as a part of the comp plan, and then the other one is as a part of the project plan. Are they at different levels, details and all that? Are they overlapping each other? Are they complementing each other? What, can you elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, typically, so with this comp plan, I believe we're doing, and I'm looking at David on the screen, it's a non-project SEPA checklist that we're completing as part of our current comp plan. Typically, when we get to sub area plans, we look at doing an EIS. So the town center has an EIS, it's a sub area, it's that level of review. And if it's decided at that time to do a, a planned action ordinance or planned action EIS, that even provides another level of environmental review when it comes to design standards. So it just depends on the scope of work and the environmental review required, but that would be all vetted when we scope the, the, the project, again, to be completed at a later date. That would all be inclusive of that.
And if, if you look at it from the creation of the sub area plan versus the neighborhood plan, how much of a time difference we're talking about? Is that substantial difference as far as delaying the project or expediting the project?
David has his hand up, so I'm going to defer to him.
We're not hearing you, David.
I wanted to just go back to the SEPA issue, the environmental review. I, I agree with everything Kelly said, but I wanted to add also that you, you could foreseeably develop a neighborhood center within the comp plan and, and development regulations that go along with that for, you know, a limited scope within what's called an expanded SEPA checklist and not have to do an EIS. You could do that. A sub area would almost always, from my perspective, require an EIS because of the scale and magnitude of what you're doing with a sub area. And in line with your question, the amount of time is also, the amount of time also corresponds to that, that, that level of intensity as well, that a, a sub area is a much more involved process. Usually it, you know, has, it's quite, quite elaborate in, in how it all fits together and, and the, the development regulations and the permit process that goes along with it. For example, we have a, a town center sub area, that is a sub area. I've worked on other neighborhood center plans, which really are, are more limited in scope, far more simpler in their zoning, and far more simpler in the permit process that ultimately result, that, that's part of the development. So yes, there is a definite difference in the amount of staff time that, and even community engagement and public involvement and time with the planning commission and council that, that goes along with the differences.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, and actually, the text on the screen is helpful. So it seems to me that we're kind of, there's two pieces to this, which is adding neighborhood center to the comprehensive plans, future land use map. So that's kind of adding it, it's a map, but it's kind of adding it to a list. And the other one is, new land use goal will be added related to the creation of neighborhood centers throughout the city. My question is, aren't we really already doing part two? So I, I'm not sure, is that really something we need to recommend at this point? Isn't that something we're already planning to do as part of the comp plan?
It's always that awkward pause to see which staff member is going to jump in. So I'm going to.
Yeah, and I never know if I should look at the screen or the.
David, do you want to take that question?
Sure. Yeah. So, so we, we have already proposed, including the Eastman properties as a potential future neighborhood center that would require further evaluation and study. That has been shown on a map that was provided to the planning commission and the council through past meetings. We are also proposing a new land use goal related to the creation of neighborhood centers throughout the city. We think neighborhood centers will play a key role in the future development of the city and providing amenities and, and, you know, shopping and alternatives to people in their neighborhoods, and it's a great opportunity. But, but getting the right size and, and making sure the community is involved in what exactly is included in those neighborhood centers is absolutely key. So yes, we are already doing that, and that is one of the reasons why we think that this, this recommendation is that instead of making the text amendments proposed by Mr. Eastman, that instead, we would take this on when we study sub areas to figure out what each of the roles of this, of potential, sorry.
Neighborhood centers.
When we study neighborhood centers, to, to take, to, to, to consider this, this area, this, these properties, and what their role might be in providing various amenities to neighborhoods, and also what other opportunities might be there for other activities that are low impact, like he's, he's saying in his proposal, you know, we're, we are not by any means opposed to, we're, we're not for it either, we, we are simply neutral on it until we have the opportunity to completely study it. But there are some really great ideas, and there is the potential to really make some improvements to some of the stormwater problems and erosion problems that are out there. And Mr. Eastman has explained that, but we haven't seen any technical reports that support that. We haven't seen, you know, we, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet because it's, it, first, it needs to be docketed. So if the, if this commission wanted to recommend that, that we include, you know, the, the text amendments, then we'll go ahead and, and docket it and take it to the council and see what they say and, and see ultimately if we have time to pick it up. If possibly could, you know, just because it's docketed for '24 doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to get worked on in '24. It's budget contingent, staff availability contingent, and it might be something that gets postponed until '25 or '26.
I guess, without getting into evaluating the pros and cons of what's been proposed, it seems like the recommendation of the commission could be what's on the screen, the staff recommendation as already planned as part of the comp plan update. I mean, it seems like we're already essentially doing all this anyway, so we're not actually proposing, the staff recommendation is not really to do anything substantially different than what we were already planning to do anyway. Yeah, okay. I also think, just as a comment, which probably should be later, but I think that, to me, well, maybe this is a question for you, David, to what extent do we have any kind of definition of what neighborhood centers are? And I say that because this one seems like it's different than some of the others, and so maybe that's a good opportunity for us in the future to explore what a neighborhood center really is in Sammamish.
So I, yeah, I, I would agree, and I think as part of the comprehensive plan update and development regulations update, we need to define, you know, what, what a sub area is and what a neighborhood center is. Other cities have, have that defined, and, and we don't, and, you know, neighborhood centers come in various sizes. It's not that it's just a simple, you know, four-corner intersection scenario, it's single story with corner commercial, that, that, that's, you know, there are neighborhood centers that are bigger than that and have, you know, more commercial, and maybe you have a couple five over ones, or, you know, some development of that nature. That's on the, the more intense side of what a neighborhood center would be. But a sub area is going well beyond that, and it, you know, it starts to look at a level of development that I, I, just my initial reaction is, is I do not really find appropriate for this area.
Thank you. So then my other question is about the other docket item, the Lake Washington School District docket item, and I'm just curious if putting that on the docket and heading down that path, and let's assume we get to the point and, and at some future date it, it gets approved, are there, and I was trying to sit here and think of a better description of this, because this is, sort of has a negative connotation, which is not my intent, but are there unintended consequences of this? In other words, could this, once we start on the path of this internal town center TDR concept, can it start to then be utilized and applied in ways that we didn't actually anticipate? Or would we shake that out as we work through this? Or, you know, for, could it be used for other commercial, residential, et cetera, purposes? Because once you set the precedent, that's the precedent. So in other words, are there things that we're not expecting? This seems pretty straightforward, but are there things that could come from it that we're not expecting?
I think that's key. Anything that looks pretty straightforward probably has something challenging associated with it. I've learned that in my experience. I think this is something that we would definitely want to study further and make sure we understand what those opportunities and constraints are. I can't say right now on the record that there wouldn't be challenges until we can do that further study, and to do that, this would need to be docketed.
So that, that kind of discussion will be part of the process?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
I can, I can come up with one example, and that might be that you would get a, a property that, generally in the town center, we're looking to find as much as we can development of mixed, you know, mixed use development, a combination of commercial, residential, that's right sized, depending on the zone that it's in. But what, what, what you might find is that if you started to allow for transfer of, of development, residential units from one property to another, is that you might see a property that would develop with just commercial, or just a parking garage, or just, you know, a, a use that, that you would really want bundled with residential, but, but because they're able to sell the, the residential units from that, that they're no longer building that as part of the development. So you might end up with, with an unintended output, which, which is maybe not as desirable as if you had seen the commercial and residential bundled together like the, the zoning in the center envisioned would, would happen, and it is designed to promote that happening.
Okay, that's all I had. Anybody else? Sayad, you have some?
Can I follow up on that issue, TDR? Do we have an, an example in the city right now that we use in the TDR?
Yes, we actually have, we, we have development code. The TDRs that have been transferred into the town center have come actually from King County parcels as part of an interlocal agreement, and those are the ones that we've seen right now. We do not have any TDRs where, obviously, because the code doesn't allow it, that transfers from one town center property to another town center property. So that's what we would be looking at, and again, what are those opportunities and what are those challenges associated with allowing such transfer? As David mentioned, that one example, there could be others, and we'd want to investigate.
So what you're saying is that we do have it on a paper, but we don't have any example of, of a developer comes and asks for a TDR?
No, we do. We, we have two applications that have used TDRs as part of their density calculation, but those TDRs have come from King County, they have not come within the city.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for, excuse me, questions. So thank you, everyone on the screen and in person. Let's go ahead and do public comment on this. Can you remind me how, what's the time on public comment in, in this public hearing? Yeah, okay, so it's seven minutes per person. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone have public comments on this particular topic? Want to do rock, paper, scissors and see who goes?
James Eastman. Sit on. James Eastman, Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway. So I was driving here today, and I thought to myself, what kind of public hearing is this going to be? Is this going to be a public hearing where it's just me and a few others and that's it? Or is this going to be a public hearing where the room is filled with angry people that don't like the proposal? So I was preparing myself for what I was going to say, and I'll probably just kind of say the same thing I was thinking about driving here, and that was, I've owned this land for a long time now, you know, we've bought it more over time, but no matter how great of an idea I have for it, or, you know, if there's ways to make it much better than our current code allows, like, I only get three minutes to get up here. Well, I guess I get seven, but to get seven, I had to pay the bill for the submittals, so I get four extra minutes tonight. But, you know, you're only limited to three minutes, and it's 100 acres, and I think we can do something really awesome on this property, but the code that we have really doesn't, is not a good fit for it. So the docket process allows us to say, hey, do we want to, want to go look at this a little bit more? You know, there's nothing I could say in three minutes that could address all the concerns that you might have or the things that we want to go look into. So I support the public process in, you know, moving this forward just so we can talk about all these things and all the concerns openly. Without that, it dies, and, you know, I just go develop under the existing code. And, you know, the room might be full of angry people if I do that, too. So no matter what, I think allowing things to move forward as part of the public process and let things play out is the best thing, and, you know, certainly happy to provide whatever information that needs to be. So in regards to the sub area versus the neighborhood center, I don't know the difference between the two either. I'd be, you know, I'm amicable to what the city has on there, that's fine, but there's definitely some infrastructure concerns, not concerns, but things that we need to keep in mind. This is a very small piece, but it's central to potentially curing past infrastructure shortfalls. So whether or not the city or the people around those areas want those shortfalls cured, or maybe they don't want them cured, I don't know, but with the development of this property, it potentially could cure some of those cities. I know that 42nd Street barricade, at one time, there was a newspaper article that said it was the most contested issue in the history of the city. So, you know, with development of this property, you know, there's a potential way to put a new street in around that barricade, not around, you know, not the same street, but it would, it'd basically bypass and be a safe street that isn't a 20% grade with a blind corner. So, I mean, there's all these things that can be looked at. So, I mean, there's all these things that can be looked at. I know that that takes time and this isn't anytime soon, so I get that. But yeah, it'd be nice if we could just move it forward just so we can continue the public process and take the proper amount of time to address any concerns that may come up. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anybody else? Paul. Okay, seven minutes now, Paul.
Oh, I'll take a little less. Good evening, planning commissioners. It's Paul Stickney, Sammamish. I've known James for a long time. He's been coming to meetings, had the opportunity to last summer go over to one of his properties and see a good presentation with a lot of detail. So I know a little bit about what he's doing. But in regards to docket and how to move forward with this, I've heard all the staff comments and understand all of it. I think there's a way to sort of have cake and eat it too. But before giving a solution, let me give a little bit of context first. Now, part of this I knew off the top of my head and part of it I was going into my Sammamish encyclopedia on my computer and getting a little bit of information. The part that I knew is that the town center subarea is roughly 240 acres. And the plan calls for somewhere between 135 to 140 acres to be, you know, developed. And the other 100-ish is roads, parks, open space, critical areas, and the buffers. So that's context for that subarea. I knew somewhere back in my stash, I had some information on the size of two of the three other centers in Sammamish that I got before Clohanni Annex, so I don't have that one. Oh, actually I do. Shoot, I should have thought of that, but I don't have time to look now. Anyway, the, the Inglewood and, Inglewood, back in the old day, was called Sammamish Highlands and the Izoqua Plaza. I had forgotten, or I mean, the Redmond Plaza or something like that, but it was both sides of 228. At, at Northeast Eighth, combined, those are about 47 acres. So that's what I call the Safeway Subarea, near 228 and Inglewood combined. The Pine Lake QFC, like I call it, is roughly 17 acres. So that's just some scale for size as to what subareas are. I think Eastman's project should be, or could be, both. I think it could be part neighborhood center and part subarea. Don't know which is which, but I think put it on the docket and queue it up sooner than later because it is totally discretionary. The city council doesn't have to approve anything, as Chair Baughman said. But there's not that many acreage parcels like this that come up assembled. And when we saw the relative, James talked about it, the relative outcry four years ago over the Jane Garrison and Eric Brooks egg splats, as some people called them, they called them kernels, there wasn't too much interest in doing that, going back to the planning advisory board days, of which I wasn't on, but I attended many of those meetings. There were concepts to do neighborhood centers by an architect throughout the city, got shot down in flames. So here's my point. I don't think planning for other neighborhood centers is sooner rather than later. I think it's later rather than sooner. And in my opinion, it's going to be up to the discretion of the HOAs and homeowners as to how much they want their character to change and the size of those centers, in my opinion. Anecdotally, I'd be shocked if any of those have, have areas under, under or over five acres, probably many two to five, if any at all. So this is a different kettle of fish. And I think I heard staff say that Eastman has to pay for this. I'm not certain that's true or how it works as the process goes on, but maybe one does the changes to the text and the land use amendment and encourages the city council to have, and I'm not speaking for Eastman, he and I haven't talked about this, I'm sharing my opinions because I go way back on dockets and all kinds of things, have him put together what he thinks is best. I did get a copy of what he turned into you guys and it's frankly exciting. There's a lot of stormwater drainage down those drains that are causing a significant amount of erosion into Lake Sammamish that James has come and talked about to city council many times over the last five years. He's got studies of how, how much it is. There'd be opportunities to consolidate all that, take it down the hill, put it in a pond, do the thing with salmon, treat the water, put it out in the lake, all kinds of neat things. So with the option of not having to do anything, I think that his project should be queued up and reviewed sooner than later. He could be putting together, and I'm not speaking for him, he may tell me to, no, I don't want to do any of that. I don't want to spend the money, but I'm talking on my own is get, turn a lot of things in in 2024. So there's a really good starting point, knowing it's on the docket and use placeholders and development agreements as the cornerstones for implementing the project in phases. And that's my recommendation. That's my potential solution for this unique property that isn't all that often. On the school district, I don't want to talk about them. I want to talk about TDRs in general and something that I've said several times over the years. In my opinion, the amount of credit that a TDR sending site has is beta, is based on that site's net density, not its gross. So I would just be sure that in studying this, that that distinction is made early. You're not talking about the gross acreage of a site. You're talking about the net development capacity based on zoning and development regulations and to what extent that net is not achieved, that's the part that can be transferred out with a TDR. And then those are my comments on both. All right, I still have 20 seconds, but I'm done.
Thanks, Paul. Good job managing the time. Anybody else? And do we have anybody on the call? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you to everybody. The best thing at this point would be if someone could make a motion so then we can have a discussion. And I believe maybe we were going to have some suggested motions to help move things along. Obviously optional at your leisure, you can use that or change something else, but this would be the thing to do to get us going.
What kind of motion are you talking about?
One of those two or something similar to it.
I can give you one. So I'd go with option two, move to recommend that the city council docket request one as amended by staff and request two of the docket requests be shown in the November 2nd agenda packet.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we recommended to the city council, putting these two on the docket. Any discussion?
Do we need to add, as discussed earlier, the part about, you know, putting a placeholder for a study to ensure that it can live on and potentially move, you know, be looked at in more detail later? Do we need to add that into the motion specifically?
I believe that's implied, but I'm not the expert in any, by any means in that.
Yeah, I think that's implied that as amended by staff for docket request one, that it would be considered identifying the neighborhood center in the comp plan. And then that would come as a separate work plan item after the comp plan is updated. So that's, that's implied. If you want to be more specific on when that should happen, like in '25, '26, you're more than welcome to amend this motion to recommend when we should start working on that neighborhood center.
So may I ask, my impression is that the way that this is worded, and John, you tell me if, what you think, I believe it says, recommend to the city council docket request one with a slight amendment and request two. So we're basically right now recommending both of the docket requests?
Yes, and I was just adding clarification to that first part of that motion. But yeah, altogether, request one is amended by staff and request two of the 2024 docket requests is shown in the November 2nd agenda packet.
Comments by anyone while I glance through my paperwork here to make sure I understand what we're doing?
So if I understood David correctly, the advantage of going with the neighborhood center is essentially the bar's a bit lower than going full-blown subarea. And it would align with what we've already discussed of looking at neighborhood centers citywide, knowing that this particular proposal would be teed up or at least have a placeholder head of the line for future work, however that timeline works out. Would that be correct somewhat?
That is correct.
Go ahead, Carrie.
As part of that, is there, is there a way, is communication still happening with the applicant in the city or in, you know, is there anything such that, you know, because we are talking about a project that is more real than any, than theoretical in terms of just idea, you know, land and ideas and people? You know, what is, you know, if there, is there any communication happening, you know, in the meantime between the requested and the city? If there are, you know, folks want to get ahead of it, say Mr. Eastman, for example? Is that just normal course of business if he reaches out, if people reach out to ask questions or, or things like that?
Yeah, so we, if people reach out to ask questions, absolutely. Also, if this does get docketed by the city council, Mr. Eastman would have 30 days to submit an application. That's a lot more thorough than just the docket request form. And so that would be kept on file. It would be part of our review as we go forward.
Other comments?
I think Mr. Eastman said like, you know, subarea or the neighborhood is the same, right? So option number two is the best, it's going to the docket, so.
Okay. So I like option two. I might think we might consider recommending to the council that they do view basically work on this neighborhood center as a priority going into 2024. And the reasons for that is, as, you know, Mr. Snickney said, 100 acres is unique, but there's also a lot of concerns as was submitted by some of the citizens in the area. And so going through the normal process of getting input from the community and, you know, working, like I said, the process would be a way to determine if there are ways to use that unique property that's in the best interest of the total community. And given that this is, you know, pretty important, it would be maybe beneficial to the council to hear that the commission says that this should be something that's, you know, high on the priorities going into 2025. So I don't know if that's something that we might want to make as an amendment to the motion or if that was even necessary, we can just do that as a text as part of what we submit to the council.
You saying that expediting the process?
No, not, not expedite the process, but to make sure it doesn't get lost.
Prioritize maybe.
To prioritize it in the future.
Yeah, I, my sense would be that that could be in the transmit letter because it's not really changing what we're recommending. It's just urging, you know.
That's how I would handle it if it was totally up to me, but I was also looking to staff to see if, you know, you have any experience with, with that, so.
Does there's any staff who want to address that or I can take that one on? I, I like that approach of moving forward with option two and then emphasizing the priority within the recommendation letter that goes to council.
Sayad, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question as far as the timing? If the council approved the, the option two, is the, is the creation of the neighborhood center as the staff recommends would go parallel as far as the time and as far as the work to be done with the comp plan? Or comp plan process has to continue before getting to the creation of neighborhood center?
I can take, take that one. So we, we have a, a very full plate, a very full agenda for the next year, and we do not have the capacity by any means to take on trying to develop a, a subarea plan or a neighborhood center plan along with updating our comprehensive plan. What would happen is as a result of the comprehensive plan, we will identify a continued work plan going forward that the council would then have to discuss funding and prioritizing and would ultimately result in if, if prior, if a priority and if funded by the council, us beginning work in '25 and '26 on further planning for specific neighborhood centers or subareas such as Inglewood or Pine Lake or there are some additional potential neighborhood centers shown on the future land use map that's draft at this point, including this, this area of Mr. Eastman's properties. And what that would be is a fairly robust community outreach program, looking at strengths and opportunities and weaknesses and, you know, challenges for each of the different areas being studied and would identify, you know, what, what, what role it plays in the future development of the city, how, how, you know, the vision for that area should, should be shaped, what development regulations might, might work to help facilitate that and protect against any potential impacts. And then there would be a CIPA, either expanded checklist or possibly an EIS in the case of a subarea that would go along with that. So, you know, it's about anywhere from a 12-month to an 18-month process to put together a, a neighborhood center. I would say it's about a two-year process to really do a subarea plan. There's a little more work that goes into, actually a lot more work that goes into the, the vision component and the zoning and the permit process that goes along with that as well as environmental reviews. So I hope that helps.
So with that, David, you mentioned something kind of caught my attention. Is that a CIPA or probably you're going to get into the NEPA because as you know, NEPA takes much more time and much more complex than a CIPA. So does it matter at this point?
NEPA would only be required if there was federal funds at play. So, so long as there is not federal funds at play, then we're not required to do anything with NEPA.
Thank you.
Quick question, David. So for all these studies and the feasibility analysis, does the city has to pay for this? Or would?
Well, it really depend, it, it really depends on where the proposal comes from. If, if it was something that, that Mr. Eastman picked up and really pushed forward, we would likely, you know, it's, if the city is not interested in taking it on or, or funding it and he wanted to fund it to move it forward, that's something the council would have to entertain through some sort of agreement with the property owner. You know, there are examples of that out there. More often, a city will take it on on its own because of the, the importance that that center or subarea might play in the future of the city. So I think, you know, at this point in time, we don't have, you know, the actual work plan in front of us. I think we, we'd have to determine how to fund it. It could be a mixture of funding. There could be a, some sort of an agreement between the property owner or the city as to how to develop that. It is a regular occurrence that, that private property owners do environmental impact statements, for example, they pay for them and, and the, you know, the, the city ultimately does the work, but the, the private development or private property owner pays for that. So it's not, it's not. So it's not, it's not unheard of.
So I have a couple of comments I want to make about these regarding James Eastman's proposal. I guess my view of it is, as a, what we have is a property owner in the city who, rather than just roughshod developing it, wants to actually have a conversation about alternatives. And so, you know, whether it's a neighborhood center or a subarea and it could start out as one and we realize we can't do that and have to do the other, I mean, it's going to take a while. At least we have somebody who's interested in talking about it because truthfully, the alternative is not just a forest, the alternative is through some net density, moving things around, you can build a bunch of houses over there and, and keep some forested area, some natural area, but we shouldn't misunderstand the choices here. The choices are not leave it alone and not do anything, although he could do that, but probably not. The reality is it's probably going to be a bunch of houses or we explore the idea of trying to do something different. And I think we should, we should value that someone has come forward and wants to at least have the conversation. So I support that. The Lake Washington School District one, I think it's interesting that James's proposal kind of causes that one to fly under the radar because his proposal or suggestion is kind of flashy in comparison to what they're asking for. That one actually, I'm, I'm actually more hesitant about and here's why. Again, what are the real choices here? The real choices, as I understand them at this point, which I can't claim I understand it very well, but they have a parcel that has a creek running through it and has some restrictions that they could build houses, they could have somebody build some houses on there, that's what I think it's, it's on for. That doesn't mean that they can build houses on top of the creek, that doesn't mean that they can ruin the property. They still have all kinds of restrictions that are existing in our code and are required that they have to live with. So the only reason that they're asking to do this is there must be a benefit to them to move from that piece of property and parcel to a developer or putting it somewhere else on a different parcel. I can't necessarily hear or see very clearly what the advantage or value is to the city. And that's the question in my mind that I, I think we should move it forward to try to figure that out. But it's easy to not see that we should be evaluating some of these things based on what the city and the citizens of the city of Samamish get by allowing this to happen. And also, we need to be super cautious about, as David kind of described, unintended consequences of starting down a path of moving things around in the town center. We need, if we really want to talk about the town center, that should be part of revisiting town center, not part of an accidental TDR process that we never really intended to create parking garages separate from, from shopping centers or something. So I'm a little cautious about that, actually. I think we need to be very diligent. I do think we should move it forward because it's unclear. So maybe by moving it forward and studying it more, we'll figure out and get clarity about why it's good or why it's not good. So yes, I support moving both of them forward, just as it was, just as the motion says. But I do think we need to, in both cases, keep very clear in our mind what the two scenarios are and what we're really comparing and then urge caution in both cases as we move forward to make sure that the outcome is still what's in the best interest of the community. So I'll vote in favor of this and, but I am a little bit cautious about how this proceeds. But most things in a, we have to recognize, most things in, in any level of government tend to move a bit slowly and there's a good reason for that and that's how it should be. And this is a good example of why we should not go too fast. All right, I talked enough. Off my soapbox. Anybody else? If nobody has any other comments, then I'm going to call a question and say we're going to vote. So we're voting on the motion, which was option two in front of you. And I will just remind you that we'll vote on this motion and we will put some language urging prioritization of the Eastman Property Neighborhood Center study in the letter that gets transmitted to the city council so that they recognize that that's important, but it doesn't necessarily change what we're recommending. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of the motion, option two, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, unanimous. So we're going to go with option two and make that recommendation to the city council and Mike and I will look out for the language in the transmittal letter. All right. Anything else from staff about calendar or other items that, that we need to talk about?
Nothing on the calendar, but I did want to just extend my thank you to all of you who attended the workshop on October 21st. We received some fantastic feedback. I personally had a great time, but I really do enjoy this stuff. So I just want to say thank you for, I'm giving up a Saturday to attend that workshop. We just got so much done and it was a good use of time and that we don't have to have eight different meetings to get the same results. So again, thank you.
Yeah, I think I ate pretty well that day, actually, as it turned out, so that was great. Okay. Anything else? All right, if somebody could move to adjourn?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.